Good evening.
Hey Eva, I just sent you a quick email about your committee notes. It's not a big deal, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention if you found it.
Oh yeah, I just saw your email, so I forwarded it to Kathy. I don't know if, you know, I'm sure she has the right date on the calendar, so it's probably not a big deal, but thanks for, yeah, thanks for pointing that out.
Yeah, my apologies, I skipped over your message.
That's alright.
Okay, where's Mary?
Oh, she's here.
Mary is here somewhere there.
Can you hear me, John?
Yeah, of course.
I got a, I got a text from Mary. Let's see, can't sign in again, signing off and back on. So she's having trouble.
Okay, well, what can I say? She doesn't have a map.
Oh, don't start. I'm not with you on that.
Alright, I'll give her this one more chance and then we can. I can't stay. We'll hang in. Let me call the August 12th meeting of the town council to order. Welcome, everybody. Nice to have cooler weather. We should be having this outside. But here we are.
Well, how do you know we're not outside, John?
Well, I don't know, maybe the pictures in your back. Are a clue. I, on the other hand, am sitting in the middle of Ridge Road. Right. Uh, okay, so.
She still can't get in.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that.
I'm just keeping you updated.
Her name is on the participants list.
I know, but it's, yes, she's there, but.
There but not there.
Right. Okay. Yeah, let's move on to approval of the agenda. I distributed the agenda. In advance. There's been one. No, there's been no additions. Or changes. And I have a, a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second Eva.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any, any discussion about the agenda? If not, all in favor of approving the agenda, raise your hand. Mary, can you hear us? No, she's definitely dead in the water still. Okay, um, the agenda is. Which brings us to public appearances for tonight. This is for any resident, anybody here who wants to say something in three minutes. Or so, on a, on a matter that's not otherwise on the agenda, if it is on the agenda, please let us know with your hand raised that you have something to say and. That's the time we will. Hear from you, anybody?
Can you hear me?
Hear who?
Here. I'm on my phone. I don't know why.
We can see you as well. Good. And Paula, you're waving at me.
Yeah. I do have a statement to make and I'm going to read quickly and cut it short and if I have time, I'll add the whole thing, but the whole statement will be in written form. So I'll go on and start. The racial and social equity committee leadership team, including the non-resident members and the non-resident co-chair of the Lakenfield work group have demonstrated their commitment to the town approved goals for RACAC exemplified by the committee's accomplishments, which will be attached in the written form. We're especially proud of the resolution acknowledging the racially exclusionary past, et cetera. We're grateful for the efforts of Mayor Compton and Council Gilmore and their willingness to consider RACAC recommendations without bias and to take a stand as leaders. We acknowledge and value the work of those RACAC members who are truly committed to furthering the goals of the resolution. We're also grateful to the seventeen town residents who signed letters of support for the work of RACAC. We appreciate all of the residents who have offered encouragement and constructive suggestions. In short, we don't feel that the relationship of RACAC and the town is healthy right now. There's a disconnect between RACAC and the town government as to how to move forward on the promises in the resolution. As a consequence, the leadership team of RACAC has decided to become an advocacy group of volunteers independent of the town government. We believe this change will help us focus on our core goals of social and racial equity while minimizing the time we spend defending our goals and the means by which we try to achieve them. RACAC's mission will remain unchanged and will continue to encourage dialogue, encouragement and participation in the events and in our work. We will be inviting others to join us and we hope to maintain a respectful and transparent relationship with the town and to continue working towards a more informed, equitable and inclusive Washington Grove as stated in the resolution. Now, I have some other details. If, if you want to hear them, but I, it will probably run over time and they will all be in the written statement that I will. Submit to, to be posted on the website.
And you'll add me to that as well?
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, it'll be when I, when I write to the mayor and councillors, it'll go to you, right? Yeah.
Thank you.
So Paula, what, what does that mean for the RACAC committee?
Well. The town can choose and the RACAC committee can decide if they want to remain a committee that. Works on the same issues. We will still be RACAC. We will still be, have our independent group and our logo, but if the town chooses to have another group or residents want to. Form another group with some of those same goals, of course, people are free to do that at any time. We'll be inviting people to join us in our independent. Status.
So, since this is the first time hearing about. Decision of the, of the, of the, of the leadership group, how many is this out of, out of the committee? So the committee doesn't know this, it's just.
I'm, no, because of the history of rumors that precede announcements. So, no, the, the committee doesn't, we agonized over that decision. Agonized over who to tell ahead of time, but because of the history of rumor and innuendo that precede a lot of things we do. We decided to just announce like this. I'll be calling some people and talking to them after. And as I said, there are more details, I can read more details about why the decision was made. They, if you would like.
No, I think, I think it would be better for everyone to read it because I'm sure you put a lot of thought into that and.
Yeah.
So it's not possible to, to, you know, get, get all of the nuance.
In three minutes.
In three minutes. Yeah, so. It, that sounds like a, a. Significant change, at least the existing committee. But any, any councillors have any questions that don't go into, you know, that you might want to address?
Okay. Brief question, was it? Was this done by a majority of the voting numbers of the committee?
I said that was from the leadership team that we are going to have an independent group. The rest of the committee may choose to remain a committee, calling themselves something else. That's fine.
I, I understand.
I, I just have a que, I don't understand how, I understand what you're saying, Paula, and I appreciate, you know, everything you've done and everything, all that. I just don't understand, the RACAC is. An official town committee, that, that name, and there's people on that committee. I don't understand how. A few people within that committee can go and take that name and then. Yes, it's interesting that the committee still exists.
Peter, I'm sorry, we can, you can't address that aspect. That's not what this was about, I think.
Well, when, excuse me, but I'm, I'm a councillor, I'm asking, I'm, I'm just asking this question because this has been brought up. Why can't I ask it?
Well.
I mean, there's, there's, how many people are on RACAC?
It was the leadership group. The committee has not been informed. They're being informed at the same time we are.
Yep, I know, but, but they're being informed that RACAC, the committee, no longer exists.
No, that's not what.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, RACAC is now owned by this leadership. I mean, that's what I'm hearing.
No, we are stepping down as the leadership team of the town affiliated committee.
Right.
And we are forming our own advocacy group. Still seeing the same work. We still exist unchanged.
That's the thing, I just want to be clear on who is we.
Okay, well.
Who's, who, who owns the name RACAC? So all the people who are on RACAC, who aren't on the leadership, no longer belong to RACAC.
Founders, the founders, you all can debate that. I don't care.
Okay.
But the, but the founders actually decided the name. And we got our own logo. So I feel that we own it, but you know what? You all can debate that.
Okay, yeah, I, I just, I just wanted to get a little clearer on that. Thank you. Because I know we have a lot more. I understand. Alright.
Yeah, I mean, the current existing membership can, you know, vote on a new leadership team if they want, you know, or they can dissolve. I mean, that's up to them. We will be calling people and talking about.
Okay. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Paula. Anybody else with something to hear and bring up? Not?
As a resident, not as, as, not as a councillor. Most of the shakers of the town are on this meeting tonight and I'm just requesting on behalf of the REC committee that people think about helping us out and volunteering for the upcoming Labor Day event. Okay, we have a lot of people I'm looking at already have, but if, if you're thinking about it, we'd love to have a little bit more help. Okay? I'm done, John.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Anyone else? Alright, we'll go on to the treasures report. Jean is here. This is the first month of the new year. I will. Show it, Jean.
Yeah, there's not much to say. It being the first month, you'll notice there's no property tax listed on here. I am not, I don't receive a report from the county. For July until after August 16th, there's always a lag there, so there's no property tax to, and dwelling tax on this report because of that. The only other thing I, just as sort of a ongoing heads up, the utilities. Because we now have the community solar. There's not a steady pattern like I've been used to with utilities. We're getting very small bills for the lake and the garage. The town hall's Pepco account is about two hundred in credit, so we're not paying anything to Pepco for the hall. The community solar company, Skyview, there's a lag time. Between when they give me the invoices for a certain month, it can be as much as two to three months later, so. There's no Skyview expenses recorded in July. Because it'll take a few months to get that, so we are always going to see some wacky patterns with the electricity. Just want to put that out there. Other than that, I do not have any comments because there's very little on here, being the first month. Any questions? Hearing none?
Okay, then we need a motion to accept the treasures report. Peter, you're, you're silent.
I'll move to accept the treasures report.
Okay.
I'll second it. I, I got my voice back.
Okay. Darn, I can't, I can't mute you.
Sometimes I can't find the unmute fast enough.
Okay, all in favor of accepting the July treasures report then? Everybody is raising their hand, even Jeff. Alright, did we lose, there's Mary. You keep, you keep falling off the top of my screen there, but I keep putting you back. Alright, so also under the treasures report is the next item, which. Is, is a request from the Film Society concerning the fees they have been charging for each, each showing during the year. And I think we have Bob Kristen here to explain what their request is. Bob?
Thanks, John. So in the past, and by the past, I mean before COVID, we were getting around twenty-five people to come to a film. And we charged like seven dollars at the door or five dollars if you bought a subscription and we were pretty much breaking even. And so, of course, we didn't have films during COVID and since COVID, the number of people coming has dropped off significantly. Most of the time, we'll get like the six or seven members of the steering committee and then two or three other people. Now, we pretty much broke even last season because a lot of people bought subscriptions, but, but didn't come to the movie. So we're a little perplexed at what's happening here and we'd like to try an experiment and see if we can build back our audience somehow. We thought, is, is the, are people not coming because they don't want to pay to see the film? Are they not coming because they, everybody's used to streaming now and they'd rather see it at home? So we'd just like to try and see what happens if we just waive the fees for this year and see if we can build back our audience. If it turns out that people aren't interested in having a film society and then the people who are interested can just watch a film together and have their own discussion without paying for distribution rights. So that's, that's kind of where we are. Amimi, do you, did you have anything to add?
I just wanted to say that this season, we're, we're, we're trying some new things. We're gonna. Move away from every Sunday nights for films to see if Friday nights or Saturday nights works better. We may experiment with having, announcing a film for people to stream at home and then get together socially at some chosen house in order to discuss the film. So, so we are experimenting a little bit this, this year. But. We're. We're, and we're grateful for the support from the town all along because. You know, we've always been in the budget, but we've always been able to pay back at least ninety percent of what we, we were asking for. But we really want to see if we can attract people.
Okay. How much money are we talking about?
A thousand dollars.
Right, so the, the, I guess the request is that. Well, the, the Film Society has been a lot of, I guess it's a thousand, I'm sorry if I.
Yeah, the budget says it's twelve hundred in revenue and expenses. It was a wash, yeah.
So pretty much the expense allocation will, would stay and if their revenue expectations would be essentially nil. So this would be a straight cost to the town for this year as a, as a trial year to see, to assess what the interest is in continuing showings of films, group showing of films, so. I guess, I'll ask for any comments of the council and then we'll, we'll. Ask for kind of a sense of the council. So anybody? Wish to comment?
Have you guys thought about doing, like, instead of just going the whole season with nobody attending? Try it with maybe just a couple and then if you see the attendance increasing, continuing versus, you know, having five or six people showing up again and just doing that throughout the entire season? Have you looked at something like that?
You mean, just like have the first couple of films be free and then see if people are coming back?
Yeah, see if, see if that works instead of doing it for the entire year or, yeah.
I, we hadn't thought about that. I mean, that, I guess we could. Usually we put out the flyer and we say, you know, this is what it costs to come. I don't sure how we'd word the flyer, the first two are free and then we'll see or something. I, I.
Okay, yeah, I see.
I don't know how we market it, but.
Um, I have a question. Have you, is it? For residents, a certain fee and like, how have you done it in the past, residents versus non-residents and have you really marketed it outside of town? Because I can imagine that maybe, you know, you market it outside of town, you might get more people, but I, I don't know, I'm just curious.
Uh, we have not marketed it outside of town.
So I, I don't know if that's something you want to consider, if, if the interest is just to get more people involved.
I mean.
One of the problems is that we're not really permitted to advertise it outside of town. We have had people bring friends, for example, for outside town, that's fine. The rental agreements or the, the public performance rights agreements don't allow you to advertise it.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Small municipality, advertising it just in town.
I see. Okay.
So, so if you have it for free and nobody comes, well, that might eliminate for you the idea that it's about money and it's some other, some other issue.
Right, or switching lights.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, one, one at a time to figure out.
I would imagine maybe it's comfort, like you said, people are used to watching things in their own house, so yeah, I don't know.
It could be, it could be that the time has come, you know, that it's, it's lived its life. But we'd like to, I mean, it's been around for twenty-five years. We'd like to be sure before we pull the plug.
Yeah, no, I think it makes sense to offer it for free and see if, yeah, see if money is the issue or if there's some other issue or, and see if the timing is the issue or, that makes sense to me.
We did a survey, yes, people do. They think it's important to have a film society and, you know, they all said yes, but then, then they didn't come.
Well, maybe the idea of having people being able to watch it, but then having what you do, everybody get together to discuss it, so not necessarily sitting and watching it yourself. Stream it and then you can continue the Film Society in that way to have the discussion, but you don't have to come to this, you know, to the certain place to watch the movie.
Yeah, it could almost be like a book club, right? Like you watch the movie and then you all get together to discuss it.
That's probably what would happen if, if this doesn't work.
You, yeah, do you really think that money would be an issue in the Grove for, you know, for this? Yeah, I can't see that as being the issue.
Probably not, but I'd like to see if we can get people to come back somehow and if they don't, then we'll, we'll deal with it.
Well, have you tried the Three Stooges?
Yeah, Peter would come, Peter would be there every, every night.
We haven't. We may, we have, we have to resort to that.
How about a Rocky and Bullwinkle cartoon?
Well, okay, many other comments. I personally, you know, the, the amount of revenue that is being foregone here isn't large. And I think the. History of the Film Society and the current, the current. Organizers are certainly played a big role in the history, are very responsible regarding this activity. They've been committed to the idea of group viewing and, and, and discussion. So I'm inclined to, to accept their proposal and allow them to assess. Exactly how, how, how the Film Society is going to. Continue, what form it's going to continue.
Yeah, I, I agree with John. I think that the level of effort that this committee has put into. Supporting the Grove in his artistic effort is tremendous and a thousand dollars is, I think, a show of support from the council of, of those efforts, whether it works or not. So I would make the motion to approve. For this year, doing this test of. Sponsoring the Film Society.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion? Any opposed? Alright, great. You're opposed, Rob? Sorry. Were you in favor, Rob?
I, I'm, I'm opposed and I, I like the films, I like films, I like Film Society, but it just seems a tough sell to say to the town, so few of you are supporting the town that, the, the Film Society, that we want you all to be forced to pay to support it. I just. Sorry, you know, that, that doesn't.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry.
Compelling argument to me.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't understand what you were. Exactly what.
The, the, the basic ask that so few of the people in town support the society, that the only way it can be sustained is if. The town council forces people to spend their tax money to sustain it, doesn't seem like it's a, doesn't seem a compelling argument to me. And it's nothing against the Film Society or the people in, in the Film Society. I like film, I like the people in the Film Society. That's all. That's my post.
Alright, so the vote was five to one. You guys have, have your permission to to drop the admission fees for the year and, you know, see how it goes.
Thank you.
All right. We move on to my report or my announcements. First off, the kudos. There were several big volunteer efforts, ongoing volunteer efforts, and you know, I don't mention all of them where residents have, you know, in various, have taken on various group projects, but, but in the last month, one of them was the Sustainability Committee that that created the leaf composting pilot project and distributed that finished compost onto the hall landscape beds. Which involved more than just tossing compost. It, it needed to go underneath the mulch that is placed there to, to to retard weed growth and they, they, they did all of it responsibly. And, you know, will, it will no doubt rightly help the, the plantings and everything else on, in, in front of the hall. The other one was the Meadow Committee Volunteers, who I guess had their second outing with the Weed Warrior in the weed, contributing to the Weed Warrior Program with a, a county county leader, removing non-native invasive plants from the meadow. And that's in the, in the same vein as the Woods Committee, which does so much work in our woods, the Lake Committee that goes in and spruces up and takes care of all sorts of issues at the lake. The Meadow Committee has put their volunteer labor where their principles are regarding regarding creating a meadow which is not, not overrun with non-native invasive plants, allowing the native plants to have, have a better, to better flourish. So kudos to them. Absolutely. All right. We got a bunch of announcements. Labor Day Weekend Events was in the, the tentative plan was in the bulletin. The eventual run from August, the Friday evening, August thirtieth through Sunday, September first. And in the council reports, the rec, under the rec, I think that's Barbara?
No, it's me, Eva.
I'm sorry. It's Eva. There's some more details, but of note is that Peter wanted to run in a three K foot race. So at least he will be racing against himself, apparently. So that's a, a new event for this year.
And, and John, it will, there will be an event on Monday. Pickleball will be on Monday, but the.
Oh, that's right. That's right.
The potluck will be on Sunday evening. But yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, I, I just, I mean, I, I have a question, I guess, for, for Eva. Is there is no enthusiasm because of lack of interest in, in reviving the Grove Triathlon?
Well, you, you can talk to Peggy because she, she has a very strong feelings about it, but we did. We decided to not do it this year because of it's just such a huge undertaking as far as volunteers and we are really bare bones on the Rec Committee right now and and there just was not very much interest in it last year. And we were told by Joey and Allison that if we needed to cut something, that was the thing to cut because it took so much planning and so many volunteers and they said it was really poorly attended last year and the, the previous year. So, I mean, we can always bring it back. I know Peggy would love that. And if other people wanna you know, come join the Rec Committee and express their interest in bringing it back next year. But yeah, we're not going to do it this year.
So I, I don't often make any, have anything to say about many of the events, but my suggestion is that next year, not this year, but next year that the Rec Committee ought to reach out and ask who would participate in a triathlon if we had one. And, you know, assess the participation in advance. And I think if you've got participation, you get, that's the first requirement. And the second one would be, do we have enough volunteers to, you know, you know, patrol the roads, the intersections, what have you, to, to carry it off? And maybe, maybe that would either generate, either, either put the, you know, bury the event with data, with actual data or, or maybe revive it. So I know that's an effort, but the Rec Committee has had, did have a, a poll on events this year, and I see no reason why not to have one of those perhaps regularly just to to, and, and, and that, that poll can require names. So you can reach out to the people who are enthusiastic to put their, you know, put some time on it if at all possible.
Yeah, you know, John, part, part of our decision was last year we had the bike race and a, we had races and especially nobody showed up. You know, and adding tubing to that is not gonna grow a lot more people. But we can, we just make it, we can do it next year because it was an amazing event. What we've found is that the world has changed a lot in the last, I mean, I don't think we've done the tri, real triathlon in like ten years. You know, it used to be absolutely incredible, but the world has changed and people just, you know, don't want to commit an entire weekend, you know, three, three days to, you know, doing it. You know, there's just too many other things that, yeah.
I agree. I mean, I, I'm not saying that you're not absolutely spot on with participation.
Yeah, but, 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 but we'll do the survey next year. It'd be interesting to prove you wrong. So that would be good.
Okay, make it a challenge. Prove John wrong. It, it could be the first time. All right. Let's move along. I, I want to report on the status of road repaving. Anybody who was around town today would have seen some signs that M.T. Laney put out that they will be doing the roadwork that we have contracted for on Wednesday and on Friday. Leaving Thursday for our refuse and recycling pickup. So we don't have any interference there. There's about nine locations around town where they will be working and controlling traffic, et cetera. The Stormwater Infrastructure Maintenance Contract, RFP. The council held the first interview of, of Biohabitats, a bidder in a closed session on July thirtieth at a special town council meeting. The other bidder, SMI Environmental, will make their presentation at a closed meeting tomorrow night at a special town council meeting. As, just to remind everybody, the, the meetings will open as an, will, will start as an open meeting. And the meeting will then, will, will likely be closed to hear from SMI Environmental. The meeting will then be reopened. At the moment, there's no other items on the agenda, other than the Stormwater Infrastructure Maintenance, RFP. I distributed that agenda to the council and I think on the listserv as well earlier today. The Shared Use Pathway Liaison Committee Report. Man, I think I forgot to put it in the materials. So that report is basically a status report from the MCDOT on where there, the design progress on, on the engineering design. They are working toward a, they, the required mandatory referral to the Planning Board, which they had hoped to be in October. To get there, they had to get some approvals, some, some permits from WSSC because the pathway crosses WSSC right of way as well as the Parks, Parks Department because most, all of it, all of it is, of the pathway, Washington Grove Connector is on park property, other than a bit on town land. And I think they've acquired both of those, but they're, they remain to have some sort of environmental. They, they were requested to provide additional data. So as soon as they have all of that, they'll, they'll make they'll ask the Planning Board to schedule the mandatory review. That information will be forthcoming. And the mandatory review will precede will hopefully go smoothly and the continued engineering will proceed to ultimately to construction, whether that's in the spring, late spring or moves into, into twenty, the fiscal twenty twenty-six remains to be seen. I don't think there was anything else to report on that, on the Washington Grove Connector. However, we also have shared use pathway that Gaithersburg has been planning, the Gaithersburg Old Town Washington Grove Pathway. Gaithersburg received a, a a Maryland State Highway Administration grant to to complete design engineering of that pathway. And so they are continuing to move forward on that, reminding everyone that included in their plans is the stretch in, in town between the commercial, between the intersection of Railroad and Diamond and Washington Grove Lane and Brown Street. So we are going to be pursuing, we need, we, the, the current plan requires a calls for a bit of, of private property of a, a commercial corner to be used as part of the pathway. And that we have, have already approached the property owner and will hope to, that that, that easement can be acquired. Let's see. The last thing I, I do, I should mention here. No, I won't mention here. Forget it. So that was the old town Gaithersburg, Washington Grove Pathway Project. Next item is another announcement. District thirty-nine State Delegate, our State Delegate Gabriel Acevero requested and has scheduled a, what he is calling a State of the District thirty-nine event at MacArthur Hall on October nineteenth. This is a public event. The theme of the event, the, the event, it will have a theme which is environmental justice. Which will be addressed in several ways. I'm not certain on the program. I think anybody's certain of what the program will be. They're asking, they're, they're requesting a, a speaker from the, the State Department of the Environment on this and others. So that will be on October nineteenth. It's a Saturday.
So John, I have a question about that. So I assume they're going to be responsible for publicity for people outside of Washington Grove as well, right? They, this is just for growers, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And what time is it?
I'm not sure what the time is not.
Starts, starts at eleven.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next, next thing to report on is the planned energy audit of MacArthur Hall. Which is just an FYI that the Sustainability Committee has, has contacted and is scheduling, rescheduling, and rescheduling an energy audit of MacArthur Hall to determine to determine what the, the status of, of, of you know, energy loss and use at the hall, obviously to see what, what recommendations might be forthcoming with respect to all the aspects of heating, cooling and energy use at the hall. One of those, by the way, one of those issues which I discussed with Bob Brewer, Chair of the Sustainability Committee, was the, the suggestion that we reexamine air conditioning, the main hall after the very, the, the heat wave that, that basically made it very, very uncomfortable to utilize the hall. We do air condition the council rooms and the office, but we don't, don't do the hall. And that question will also be asked, but there, there is a fundamental problem air conditioning the main hall. And that, that, that has to do with the large volume, first of all. The large number of windows, all of which are not insulated glass or or energy, say, energy barrier glass, the lack of ducts of any kind and the fact that the hall is not used for all that many hours a day on the average all year. It's actually used very few hours. So the expense is a factor. Both in preparing the hall to, to make possible air conditioning and then the actual energy costs to maintain the the, the air conditioning. That's not to say it's impossible, but it will be addressed. But not in, in detail for the reasons most of which I think I've named just, just a moment ago. Okay. Next, I want, I do want to report on the, the subcommittee that the council approved on maintenance of unoccupied properties. The committee has already met and has, is, is working on on proposing what, any, any changes to our ordinances and also proposing, hopefully, some procedures that the council and mayor can use to address unoccupied properties that have maintenance issues. Last item I just want to mention is the parliamentary education that the council approved. The, the, you know, the training in Robert's Rules of Order. Last month, Barbara, of course, has spearheaded that and after the, the session, as that has now been scheduled for Sunday, October thirteenth for myself, the town councillors and all of the chairs of the various committees in town were also invited if they cared to attend as well. So it's Sunday, October thirteenth. It's a three hour session in the morning.
Right. And it starts at nine, nine to twelve.
All right. That's the end of my report. Any questions? All righty. I had one administrative matter that, looking at the agenda, I felt we might actually not go till midnight. So I stuck this one in and the council I, I hope will agree to, to discuss this, which we had, which we had decided to defer from, from January when we did have our, our ice and snow day or days. And that is the town's policy on snow removal. The The, um, you know, nobody had seen, haha, snow or ice, uh, in a few years around town. And the, this winter, um, we definitely had it and it failed to melt, uh, quickly. And, um, there were many, uh, a, a, a bunch of resident questions and, and, and concerns that certain areas of our roads remained icy. And, um, it was, uh, it was hazardous perilous to, uh, drive, you had to drive carefully on those sections. And of course, the town's current policy established a whole bunch of years ago now, um, was to, uh, not use salt in treating, um, our roads, um, to, uh, during, during snow, uh, and, and, or ice. And the, um, so we don't use salt, which of course, um, lowers the, uh, the freezing, uh, um, freezing point, raises freezing point, sorry, and, um, lowers the freezing point. So the ice melts quicker. But we also, our, our current contractor, which is, as it turns out, RJ Landscapers, no longer, um, have the capability, they haven't for a while, to, um, utilize, um, a, a sand, sand distribution. Um, and there are some reasons for that. It's not simply because they don't like sand. It's, um, it's, uh, it, it's difficult to maintain sand for use during freezing temperatures. Um, and you, you need, uh, you need to have it, uh, unfrozen and available. So that, uh, in brief, they don't use it. They don't do it. So the question for the council is, in revisiting our policy, do we want to hire, engage, um, a, um, a contractor who will distribute sand? And if so, um, if, if that is, uh, the decision, we will have to find a way of making that. We may have to find a way of making that possible, such as storing it here in Washington Grove in a, in a, in a manner that it can be used, um, as needed. That is, it won't freeze or get wet and, and, and create a problem. Okay. So the current policy is no, is, is no salt, which of course addresses melting pretty well. And we haven't been, um, been having sand either distributed. So.
Right now, we're basically doing nothing. It's
It's plowed.
It's plowed. Okay.
And if you plow it, 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 it don't make, we're depending on the temperature to melt any, um, any ice that forms overnight, um, during the day. And obviously, if we had multiple snowstorms, one after the other, that would not work. But the fact is that in recent times, as in the last probably five, seven years, there've been very few times where ice has remained a problem. Um, yeah.
You know, when Steve was, when Steve was doing it, was there ever a prob- I don't remember there ever being like a problem like there was this year when Steve was doing it. Is, am I incorrect?
No, you're correct because he kept a salt, a sand, he kept sand. It was in the, in the garage out, so it didn't get wet and therefore it never froze.
Right.
Could in fact be loaded. Of course, there was some effort to load it from there and, and distribute it. But yes, I think you're correct.
Steve, Steve told me that, like, I think we all know that it's probably, there was only like really a handful of places around the Grove that were even a problem this year. And Steve, so Steve didn't put sand everywhere. He just knew, he knew where it was. And I'm just, just wondering if we actually talked to RJ about, you know, kind of doing what Steve did in the past. Because it seemed to me in my conversations with RJ and Steve, that they thought they were really limited in what they could do within the Grove. So I just wonder if we had that conversation because it's, you know, RJ is very positive about taking care of our, our situation. So, um, you know, I would, I would suggest that we maybe have one more conversation with them, um, based on what we experienced this year.
Well, we can certainly do that. I had that conversation with them this winter.
Okay, yeah.
And they were, Jim Quinn was very unenthusiastic. It's one way to put it.
Yeah.
About, uh, about doing a, a run with sand. He needs a separate truck, you know, he has to divert people from, you know, plowing elsewhere. It needs to be timed correctly because if you put it down and you, you get more snow, you, you know, it does nothing.
Basically, I'm just asking.
Plow it out of there, you know, he
Do we want to sand all the streets or do we want to do what Steve did and just do the, the spots that we know are going to be a, be a problem?
Of course, we would only do the, the problem areas.
Yeah, yeah. Because if, if Jim knew that, I would think that he'd be more, uh, and more interested. But anyway, we can, we can deal, we can deal with this when, uh, in a few months.
Right. So of cour- uh, okay. So definitely I can have that conversation with him. Now, we, we, we signed an annual contract, uh, which has been with RJ. It's like for four thousand dollars. It doesn't need to be bid. Um, and we've used fraction of that, we even used a fraction of that li- this, this, this past year. So, um, um, which has been convenient, um, for, for everyone. So certainly had that conversation in advance of the, of the contracts for the coming winter. But, uh, you know, uh, it has no guarantee that, uh, he would, uh, feel good about doing. The way we pay Jim is pretty much, we pay for his, um, the time. Because he doesn't distribute salt and he doesn't distribute sand. So it's only a matter of the time, uh, his crew spends here in Washington Grove.
I have a question. How, I, I know the reason we don't use the salt is because it's, I'm guessing, bad for the environment. How, how bad is it, especially if we're only, if we were only to use it in small areas? Small problem areas. I mean, I guess that's my question is, should we revisit? I, I, I hear all the problems with using sand. So do we need to revisit the potential of using salt? Cause I don't, I don't know. I, I, I assume that it's bad, but I don't know the details of, of what it does and how bad it is.
I'd saw, they have that new, as we all know, they have that new de-isa chemical that the county uses on all the streets. And maybe that, that's not as bad. I don't know, you know, I don't know anything about it, but maybe that's something we could look into is prepping our, those areas with that type of chemical.
Right. Cause then you put it down beforehand, like when the forecast is calling for it, and then you avoid the patches of ice in, in the first place.
Yeah.
I, I don't know. I'm just suggesting maybe that's something else to research.
Yeah.
But the stuff that they prepare the roads with before it actually snows and ices is, uh, salt mixed with beet juice. And it's a liquid. I don't know that we would be able to afford having a liquid applied to our roads beforehand. The salt itself is bad for water quality and it kills plants. And that was pretty much the reason the town has decided not to be using salt for years and years and years. It eventually makes it into waterways and it will kill all, it basically is harmful to plants along roadways. Um,
Okay.
Well, let me just offer my view on that, which most of you could anticipate, maybe. But I'm not aware of any of our roadways showing any material effect from the days we used salt. All right. I, you know, there, there, there wasn't a lack of vegetation, um, the weeds grew just fine, the bushes grew just fine. There was no diebacks that I'm aware of. So I, I, and I, mine is just the memory thing. We can consult others for what they, they recall. But what Tom said about the, the salt and, and chemical being bad for, 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 for bodies of water, certainly the Chesapeake has suffered from this, um, where most of the salt will, could end up, obviously, end up in lakes and elsewhere before that. Um, and there has been a big push to reduce the, the, um, the, those sorts of chemicals from entering the environment elsewhere. So I, 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 I guess I'm, my opinion is, I didn't, I don't believe it was affecting the town per se, but because we are very environmentally conscious and, you know.
John, this is, this is Audrey speaking. John, this is Audrey speaking. I'm just going to say to you that, um, depends how enthusiastic you salt the roads, which we all know that the, um, the lorries that go up and down Washington Grove Lane, et cetera, et cetera, extremely enthusiastic about dropping salt, the left, right and center or chemical. As far as the sand is concerned, it is extremely difficult to take it out of the, um, maintenance shed and load it up into the distributor. That's where the problem lies. And that's why Steve found it difficult at times. Okay? That's just me. Bye.
Okay, John, I can also add that Isaac Walton League, uh, located not far from town has done a lot of research on this and, and have a lot, uh, published materials about the harm. And it's basically what it goes into the watershed. And first word, the top of three watersheds. So it's the downstream harm, uh, from, from the salt and, uh, say Isaac Walton has, has been on top of, and provide detailed information that was stated.
Right. So that's the answer to your suggestion, Eva. Um, it is, it's a, uh, you know, it's bas- basically, um, you know, agreeing that, uh, you know, e- e- even our small contribution is, um, is not a, not the right way to go with, um, with.
Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense. Um, and I'm, you know, I mean, I'm not advocating that we use salt. Uh, I'll just say one other thing, which is that I do recall when we were getting all the ice and snow, I had at least several people tell me that they wanted the town to discuss the snow removal because it was more, not even so much about the cars. It was about people walking and slipping. And I had several people tell me that they were, you know, having trouble with even just walking around town. And so I'm just passing that information along. They may not be here on the call, but there were people coming to me saying that they, they wanted something different to be done. So it doesn't necessarily mean salt, maybe just, you know, figuring out a different solution. So.
Well, in the old days, when I first moved here, I think a lot of us remember, they used to have a bucket of sand. Right? When you go up, when you go up. Right at the intersections. I always like looked at that and go, what's that there for? Coming from New York where everything was taken care of. So maybe that's the solution. We have to go to the Home Depot and buy a few buckets. And then go to the lake and take some sand and we'll be all set. Okay, we got it fixed, John.
Well, um, okay. So, um, unless anybody has any further suggestions, let, let me reach out to RJ and have a really, a really, um, detailed discussion as to whether or not, um, they would agree to, um, he would agree to devote manpower to distributing so, uh, sand, not salt, sand to our, uh, our problem areas. I'm ninety-nine percent certain that we would have to stockpile the salt.
Sand.
And that, uh, part of the expense will be, um, um, loading the, the salt, that I say salt, the sand. The sand will be the expense of putting that into some sort of distributor, which I'm not even sure he has. So we might have to come up with a sand, uh, spreader, uh, as well.
But he has that.
Well, he certainly had that, but, uh, and maybe he uses it elsewhere, but he says he doesn't do it. So others may do it. I mean, it's just because he doesn't, doesn't mean there isn't somebody who would. It's a matter of finding them and paying for it. So. Uh, let, let, let me start with, uh, RJ and, uh, report back. And, um, we, we can continue this as, as, as depending on what, what we find. All right. Okay, great. So now we're on to, uh, current business. And the first one is the DEI education. And I'm going to, uh, let Barbara review where we were because she and, uh, or Mary, Barbara or Mary, um, summarize, uh, you know, where, where we are now. You will recall that, um, uh, Paula asked that, uh, if Raisik could, uh, comment and, uh, could learn a little bit more details about the Leadership Montgomery proposals. And I, I, I believe they did and, um, also submitted, uh, some, a lot of that is in, was in writing and it is in the materials in, for this meeting. Anyone could read. So Barbara or Mary?
Sure. So, uh, what, the first thing that I want to address is, uh, well, everybody knows that we have the, um, proposal, uh, a motion to approve the Leadership Montgomery proposal during our last meeting. And, um, a couple of questions did come up around it. And one of them was from Chris. Uh, this is really early on. He wa- he wanted to be assured that the confidentiality of the data would be protected. And so I did ask Leadership Montgomery, you know, what they do about that. Cause when Mary and I first talked to them, they said, oh yeah, yeah, we have really tight procedures for that. And they forwarded me, forwarded me language that will be in the contract that addresses that issue. And I shared it, well, with everybody. And, um, you know, Chris responded that he, he felt that that was adequate. So, um, that was the first thing that, that I wanted to report on. Do you have anything to add, Chris? I mean, I know that's what your biggest concern was.
No, no. Uh, and I appreciate the opportunity, uh, you know, to be able to take a look at that. And I thought it was, I thought it was, uh, pretty, uh, comprehensive.
Okay, good. Thank you. So, um, when we talked to, um, Paula and Chaz Wilson, uh, and, and also in their, their document that they submitted earlier, they were interested in having additional metrics. Uh, there were two metrics that Leadership Montgomery included in their proposal. So we asked them, you know, if they would be able to add a few more. And, and they did. They had a whole list of them for pre-survey and post-survey. And this is all in my, my, uh, councillor's report. So I know that the, um, I know it's on the, in the materials that John had distributed for the meeting today. So they had a whole list of pre-training and post-training questions that, that they could use to evaluate the training. So, so that was addressed. We, uh, Mary and I also met with individuals who were provided as references for them. They provided three references. And one of them was for, from Montgomery County. She is what the, let me get her title. Race Equity and Social Justice Manager for the Montgomery County Council. And we had a lovely conversation with her. And she just gave a really glowing recommendation for Leadership Montgomery and particularly for Yacenia, who she's been working with very closely for a couple of years. And then there were two other ones that were given as references that we contacted. And we also had positive responses from them as well. We had another question about, um, whether this was going to happen on a weekday or a weekend. And we had asked them earlier, you know, would they be available on a weekend? Cause we know most residents would prefer a weekend rather than a weekday. And so yes, they, they definitely can do it on a weekend. As Tom, as, as John mentioned, uh, during the last, uh, town council meeting, I offered to meet with, with Paula and Chaz and, and we had that meeting. Uh, Mary was in that meeting. Uh, it was an in-person meeting. Rob unfortunately had COVID, so he was just there on the phone. But we spent, um, an hour and a half answering questions and, you know, providing explanations, uh, to them about the proposal. Uh, one issue that came up is Uh, one issue that came up is um Paula and Chaz are promoting this this IDI. I guess it's it's an evaluation. It it it's the one where uh people go online and do some sort of online evaluation and then they meet with somebody um privately and they have um like a half hour discussion and then they get an evaluation of where they are on um uh an inclusion spectrum. So and and we discussed that and, you know, our feeling now is is, you know, we we've got this proposal in front of us from Leadership Montgomery. Leadership Montgomery and we'd like to get through that. And we can take up this IDI proposal later, you know, at that, you know, after this is done, but we have a lot of in front of us right now. Um, the proposal is you a three-hour meeting with with town residents. And then subsequent to that would be um meeting with uh committee chairs and town counselors. Uh, three individual follow-up meetings to discuss plans for, you know, what the town will do to have a a diversity plan. So that's kind of a lot on our plate right now and we can talk about that IDI um issue later. But that is not included in the motion that I made during the last meeting and I've not added it to the to the motion. So are there any questions from the counselors about this? Mary, did you want to add anything or Rob?
No, he covered it.
No, that was a good summary.
So can we vote if there's no?
I think Paula had to comment.
I just wanted to expand a little on the IDI. I'm really glad that whatever it is that the council is behind some of this training. Um, the 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 only reason we talked about the individual assessment is because the this is pretty heavy on official town leadership. They're getting three workshops. And there's just one sort of, and Barbara, you described it as um uh DEI one O one, which is great so that everybody's on the same page with terminology and all that. But there are some town residents, some have inquired about the IDI. And there was the letter submitted um by seventeen residents saying they would like to see the DEI proposal as Raisik wrote it, but I'm just saying that they wanted the IDI and there are some residents who are not town leaders, but they have participated possibly in multiple trainings or have focused on inclusion through their own reading or coursework. And they may really want to have an individual assessment or a higher level assessment. Or maybe want a baseline assessment in addition to that group training. And I'm thinking that the IDI kind of fills that gap for people who may have already had a lot of training, don't need the one O one, but who aren't official town leaders and who won't be able to participate in those three other workshops. And the IDI just fills that gap and could possibly be an offering. Um, it doesn't have to be a big deal. It could just be offered. Um, we talked about the town possibly subsidizing. Maybe two, only two or three people want to do it. But um, you know, we did talk earlier about the town subsidizing that. It's just another um, another um level, another assessment piece that all residents would be able to put to take that opportunity um to have. Um, so I don't know. Um, I just thought that if the, you know, I know what happens when when we say we're offering this, we support this and we'll think about that later. Um, right now, the council is supporting this, the residents see this. It would just be another possibility to say this is being offered to who for whoever may want it.
Okay, so the the thing about um Barbara's calling this DEI one O one, I think I did use that term uh in 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 the conversation. That's not all it is. You know, the 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 description is in the uh, you know, ha- has been shared, you know, in in our materials. Uh, participants will, this is designed for people with various backgrounds, experiences. And and so on and on. I'm not, I'm not going to read what's here. So I I do think the whole purpose of one of the purposes of this is to have people be introspective about where they are and and that is going to be brought out in the training. And the first one is going to be three hours, so that's quite a significant amount of time.
I thought that was the only one. Is that not right?
There are four trainings.
Yeah, but the other three are only for official town leaders, right?
They are for, yeah, to the committee committee leaders.
Right, right. So I'm just saying that it might be that residents want to have a little bit more or this other opportunity. I mean, the town can subsidize or not. I was just thinking that while you're saying we back this up, that could just be another thing that is offered for people who may already have studied or worked a lot on this and want an individual assessment.
I I think the the way that that the Leadership Montgomery is set up is kind of from a town perspective. So the the first part is like anybody who wants to participate, doesn't understand about DEI or just wants to talk about kind of where we are since we've kind of been been discussing this as a town for a while. And then the second part was more specifically, and again, kind of town oriented. So given what we've learned in the last, you know, the previous session, the input we got from any citizens, you know, any residents that may have shown up, how can we apply this very specifically to our town, which I think is really in the spirit of of what our resolution was? So at that point, the planning may be, it may be at that point you say, okay, part of it is not only, you know, this looking at different committees and how, you know, how they um DEI impacts whatever they do, but maybe, you know, next step should be that, you know, offering um or supporting, you know, subsidizing or however you want to say it, you know, the next level, which would be, you know, anybody within town who is interested in in further individual training. I mean, I don't, I don't see, I don't think what we proposed says it won't have that. It's just kind of not the first first pass through in terms of the town addressing DEI for the town.
I hear what you're saying, but there are some individuals who are ready for that already, right now. They've already done a lot of their own work. And the resolution says they'll be, you will be doing individual and collective work. And some people might argue that um it would be very important to do your own internal work as well as talking about the town's work. Um, a lot of people would say that. And that that might be a first step for some people.
All right, Paula, thank you.
Okay, I'll be quiet. I got that. Shut up, Paula.
We're gonna move on. No, no, you 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 pointed out that the individual assessment is is likely is is important to some residents. Uh, I think Barbara and Mary have pointed out that um and the proposed Leadership Montgomery program makes good sense to do first and that addressing the individual um interests uh in in the IDI approach, plus there may be additional interest generated by the um by the Leadership Montgomery participation, certainly the the first community-wide uh involvement um would be something that the council um should consider um afterwards. Um, so that I'm I'm just stating where the 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 position. Any other comments uh on the proposal to approve the Leadership Montgomery um proposals um that uh have been moved? Well, if everybody is uh has 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 they made their decision, we'll move to a vote on uh approving the Leadership Montgomery proposals. Um, all in favor, please raise your hand. That looks unanimous. Great, thank you very much. And uh we're gonna leave it to Barbara and Mary to uh tempt, to schedule.
Well, that was, that was the very next thing I was gonna say. So what, just very brief, I don't want to get into a whole long check everybody's calendar for the next four months, but when we were trying to find a date for the parliamentary training, one of the dates that the counselors said that everybody was available was November ninth. So I just want to check with the counselors, are are you still available November ninth? Because that will be the first date that I'll throw out to her and if it doesn't work for her, then I'll come back to you with additional dates.
That's a Saturday.
It would be nine to twelve.
Yeah, I am.
I'm good.
All right, so I will, I will get back in touch with Leadership Montgomery and uh go forward with that. Thank you, everybody.
Great. All right. So we now uh move on to some new business. Um, the first one is the uh is the matter of of the Conservation Meadow. And um the uh a a proposal from the Meadow Committee as well as in cooperation and certainly with the Parks Department um to take uh take some actions to restore the meadow to a to its meadow character. And for that, um Bruce Davy, um who has been uh leading the Meadow Committee, the Ad hoc Meadow Committee, has prepared a um a um presentation of the what what has transpired so far, so um yeah, um. Bruce.
Okay, yeah, John, if you can uh open the presentation.
I will do so if I can remember how to do it.
Okay. And uh good eve- good evening, everyone. Um, I I if you have questions or comments, I'd appreciate if you could hold those till I till the end of my presentation. I've got uh less than ten minutes. I should be able to get through this and that should leave time for good discussion. Okay, so um I'd like to start bu- by sharing some information on the Meadows Committee itself. If I could have the next slide.
Could have it?
Yeah, we're, oh, can I, can I advance it? No, you have to advance.
Isn't it advanced?
No, it has not advanced.
What? I'm sharing my screen.
John, you're not in presentation mode. Maybe you need to.
I am in presentation mode. That may be the problem. That's exactly what I was in. Uh, still in presentation mode. I am no longer in presentation mode. It's not being shared, obviously. Okay. Let's try this again. All right.
Okay, thanks. That's a, that's good. That's a great. Okay.
Let me just try putting it in. I don't think presentation mode is going to work. But uh I can, I'm gonna try presentation mode, which should work, but it didn't. There we go. You still seeing that?
I can, it's, I can see it fine if everyone else can.
Yeah, it's fine like that.
Yeah, but doesn't advance.
Well.
Then that's not good.
Click on the slide to the next slide.
Is it, is it advancing?
It's on the second slide. Somehow you got to the second slide, so maybe you'll just have to click on each slide as we go.
Okay, I'm going.
All right.
Uh, we'll go from this.
Okay.
Why that doesn't work, but let's do it. Okay.
Okay. So the Meadows Committee is a an ad hoc committee that was organized earlier this year. Uh, you can see the members of the committee in the left-hand column. Uh, Chris has taken over from Christine as the Town Council Liaison. There are also several people in town who have agreed to be associates of the committee. I'd just like to mention uh Ernie, uh who was on the earlier Meadow Committee that was involved in developing the management plan for the Conservation Park. And, oh, we've just lost it again?
I I did that on purpose because I'm trying to get the presentation mode.
Okay.
Uh, working, which is
Oh.
very fun. How about that?
That is tiny.
Tiny. Uh, okay, that's odd. This is very odd. Okay, let me uh, let me quit playing and we will um go back to what does work.
So Bruce, you have six minutes left, by the way.
Yeah, that that's great. Okay.
Okay, okay, go for it.
Okay.
More fooling around.
Okay. And we've had, we've had other volunteers who participated in the two Weed Warrior events that we've held. The committee and its associates uh include multiple people who have some kind of biology background. We've got two master gardeners. We have people who are either uh currently certified as weed warriors or who have begun the process of becoming certified. And the list includes two households on Lower Brown Street uh bordering the meadow and three households on Ridge Road and all of us are frequent uh users of the meadow. Next slide, please. So why is there a Meadows Committee? When the Conservation Park was created, there was an operation and use plan drafted among other documents specifying that the meadow would be maintained as a meadow and that plan has not been followed. So we were tasked to reach out to Montgomery Parks about restoring the meadow's ecological health. We got underway with that in January, that discussion with Parks, and it has been a very good dialogue. It's been a, been a a pleasure to work with them. We've also tried to engage with Parks on the Lower Meadow, the uh Piedmont Crossing Local Park. And that has not been so successful. Uh, Parks has clearly heard the message that the Lower Meadow will be paved and not to waste resources on it. So we continue to try to engage with Parks on the Lower Meadow, but our focus is on the Conservation Park. Next slide. Here we go. Uh, this is from the Montgomery Parks website. They have an active Meadow Management and Restoration Program that lists four current projects. The one that is closest in size to our Conservation Park would be Rachel Carson. So this is something that that Parks is very much engaged with as a as a uh activity focus. Uh, next slide. There are multiple reasons why Montgomery Parks and the Audubon Society and the Sierra Club and Sustainable Maryland and other organizations are working to save meadows. Meadows act as a natural reservoir to capture and filter stormwater. The roots of meadow plants draw water deep into the soil. A, the uh meadows also capture and store carbon and help purify the air. And again, the roots play a critical role there in drawing the carbon deep into the soil. Meadows help maintain the diversity of ecosystems. We certainly value our woods here and the tree canopy in town, but the meadow is important to support different plant and animal life than what our woods support. And finally, meadows provide a great opportunity for recreation, bird watching, butterfly watching, or simply communing with nature as we walk through it. Next slide. Among the things we've done so far, we've had two Weed Warrior events, each with about ten to twelve volunteers with supervision provided by Montgomery Parks. We've been focused on removal by hand of several problematic plant species. We plan for this to be an ongoing activity interspersed with planting events at which we will introduce plant species that are key to supporting local meadow meadow fauna. Next slide. We've submitted two maintenance requests to Parks, uh one to replace the missing and damaged bollards that edge the park along Ridge Road and the other to refresh the signage, including providing information about the restoration effort. And this brings me, next slide, to what I suspect will be the main topic of conversation, the reduction in the number of trees. Uh, this is what the meadow looked like about two thousand and three. It was open field. Uh, next slide. This is what it looked like in two thousand and twelve, about the time of that uh that the Operation and Use Plan was drafted, calling for the meadow to remain a meadow. You you can see here the view from uh Donna Shiner's house. You can see all the way down to the houses at the other end. And uh next slide. And this is what uh the meadow, much of the meadow looks like this year. Uh, there's been a proliferation of red cedars. Now, red cedars are a native tree, but they're very aggressive. Uh, I have a quote here from Francis Smith, who's an environmental scientist with the Maryland Department of Natural Resources, who I consulted on this. Uh, stating that the cedars can turn a meadow into a monoculture dead zone. Uh, they harm the diversity of species because they are uh also a host for the cedar rust. Uh, they harm the diversity of species because they are, uh, also a host for the cedar rust disease. And that rust disease impacts serviceberry and hawthorn, as well as other useful species. All of the trees that might be removed, if we decide to remove trees, are either red cedars or non-native invasive species, the latter of which Parks is obligated to remove from parkland. For example, there's a large Bradford pear in the Meadow close to Brown Street. There are other trees in the Meadow that have been in recent years deliberately planted, deciduous trees of various type, close to the band of trees between the two meadows and a few close to Ridge Road. There's also a large dogwood tree near the middle of the Meadow. None of those trees are in the discussion about tree reduction. All of those trees would certainly remain, as would some of the cedars. But we would get back some of the long vistas and regain a habitat better suited for Meadow flora and fauna. Next slide, please. We recently received a proposal from Parks to reduce the number of red cedar trees, taking a two-phase approach. You can see it here. Uh, according to Parks, there are two hundred and twenty threes in, twenty-three trees inside the paths of the Conservation Park. This map shows geo-tagged red cedars that Parks proposes to remove. Some of the dots represent a pair of trees, so if you're counting the dots, they won't quite add up to thirty-seven and thirty-eight. We suggested the two-phase approach, in which Phase One would happen late this year or early next year. Then there'd be a pause while we consider whether to execute Phase Two. During Phase One, one or more planting events would take place in the newly opened spaces. The Meadows Committee itself has not had an opportunity yet to vote on the plan. We've only received it from Parks. Um, so we'll probably be voting on it or at our regular meeting this year, this month. The tree rem- removal, if it is to happen, would not happen before October at the soonest. So there's plenty of time for public comment and consideration by Town Council. The tree removal, if done, would probably take two days to do Phase One and would be coordinated with the bow hunters, so that the two activities would not interfere with each other. And last slide. Finally, how is all this being done and what's the long-term plan? The committee itself, in common with other town committees, is a volunteer effort and it has no budget. My expectation is that once we finalized a new way of working with Parks, that the ad hoc committee would suspend its efforts and one of the standing committees would take up responsibility for the maintenance of the Conservation Park. The tree reduction plan might be done by a contractor paid by a Sustainable Maryland grant. The grant application has been submitted by the committee, and we should know by October if the grant has been funded. If the grant is not funded, then Parks has said they will find the internal resources to remove the trees. Finally, Parks would also supply the training and supervision for Weed Warrior certification, for Weed Warrior events, and for planting events. Parks would also supply the seeds or plants for the planting events. They get those from their Pope Farm and would perform other maintenance activities, including the once-annual mowing that they do now. And we will be seeking to get all of this from them in writing. And that's it. Uh, happy to take any questions.
This was amazing. Um, that was, this is one of the best presentations I've ever seen during a, uh, during the council meeting. It's kind of hard to, uh, to go against what you've said. It's, it's a great job. I have, actually have, I have a maintenance question. Because you're, since you were talking with the county and you're looking at the Meadow, there's, there's beautiful pathways, trails that go through the Meadow, which the county, it seems like they like to take credit for. I've seen some of their signs and stuff, but the maintenance of those, my understanding is that there's a, um, town people that actually do that cutting, which, you know, I should be addressed. And my, my other question is about the, the manicured lawns that creep up, uh, along Ridge Road. Has that been addressed at all? Because that's not, that's not a Meadow. That's a lawn. And I was wondering what the county, um, you know, would have to say about. I know they helped get rid of the, we used to have some vegetable gardens and things along there, and now it's just, you, are you guys like looking, addressing that?
I, I haven't really talked to them about the, the mowing that's happening. Well, uh, either of the mowing operations that you, you talk about. It's my understanding too that there are volunteers in town that help maintain the paths. And there's also Ken Shapiro, who does the, uh, Bluebird Trail, and we are trying to support some of the things that Ken is doing. So yes, I, I think, uh, kudos to whoever from town is, is maintaining the paths. I haven't talked to Parks about the mowing that happens along Ridge. I'm sure they wouldn't agree with it. Uh, but I haven't brought it up. I think that's, that's, if the town wants to do something about it, that's for the town to do. I don't think Parks is going to jump on it.
So, but the Meadow, the Meadow Committee doesn't have any problem with that at this stage?
I would, not at this stage. I would say.
He's on the spot.
That's, that's not, well, I'm just, I'm not, we haven't, we actually haven't discussed it, but, uh, you know, my priority is, uh, the trees and, and, and the invasive species and trying to open up the middle of the Meadow. You know, the Meadow species, they like the open spaces, and our Meadow is not big enough to get back some Meadow species. Like Bob White's, uh, type of bird probably takes a bigger Meadow than we, we will ever have there. Um, but there are Meadow species that would be happy to come back in if we could make it more Meadow-like. And we could, we'd have more diversity of plants as well as better support for the animals.
Well, thank you for the education.
So I can add, Peter, that, uh, when I was liaisoning with the Parks a couple of years ago, they did mention that they had, uh, internal disputes about, uh, what to do with the manicured lawn. And that the, uh, at that point, uh, the, uh, Leave It Alone faction was prevailing. Uh, but there was, uh, some strong sentiment on the other side too. So there's no guarantee that Parks won't decide that, uh, that that shouldn't be allowed.
I'd, I'd like to say, uh, thanks to Dave. Dave is one of the caretaker, caretakers of the records of the Meadow history. And he, he was kind enough to have me over and, and show me his files and share those with me. And a lot of that material has been scanned, uh, and put up by Christine on the website, if anybody is interested. Um, and the other person who was very helpful for me in this is, uh, Georgette and Ernie, who again know a lot of the early history that preceded my being around here. Barbara.
So, uh, I, I, I echo Peter's comment. This was so well done. Thank you for making everything so clear and understandable. My question is about the trees. Do they attract another kind of wildlife that wouldn't, that we wouldn't have in town? Um, because I'm just trying to understand the, the ins and outs of the issues, because I, I'm not pro or con either way, but I just want to look at it from all sides.
Yeah, I mean, there, I mean, there are, there certainly are, uh, animals that would, would take advantage of the red cedar. But the problem is, if you just look at the sheer number and, and size of the red cedars now, they are crowding out other plants. Uh, that would also be important, you know, for the Meadow habitat. Uh, the other thing is, uh, there are ground nesting Meadow birds that don't like the raptors nesting or, or roosting in trees over their nests.
Right.
And thi- this is one of the things about a Meadow, uh, and, and how it works. Um, our foxes that everybody loves so much, they're a Meadow species. They like the Meadow. The deer will still use the Meadow. Uh, the rabbits, I see rabbits every time I go over there. Meadow bulls, uh, the groundhogs, uh, there's quite a diversity of animal life. Uh, turtle, yeah, the turtles. We see turtles when we go over there. Um, so, you know, but we want to, we, if we could open up that space, you know, what, what, uh, what Francis said about a monoculture. Those trees are taking up a lot of the square footage of the Meadow right now, and if we take them out, it's not just going to be a hole there. We're going to plant a diversity of Meadow plants that are appropriate to this ecosystem. And that will mean we'll have more butterflies and, and other, uh, you know, animals, large and small. So there'll be a net gain. Um, the other thing is, again, there's a lot of trees and there will be a lot of trees, even if we do this. Um, there's, you know, if you look at the aerial view or you walk, uh, walk the Meadow, there's going to be a lot of trees left. We're just trying to get out enough. Uh, and, and I really like that it's in two phases, because we'll have a chance to look. And we'll have a, a chance to revisit this before, uh, you know, we, we take a decision on a Phase Two. And when we're trying to do the seeding or planting events after the first phase, it'll be a more manageable size, you know, task, if we're not taking out so many trees at once.
So what, what about the trees, the, the Lower Meadow? Are those, when they develop that, is that barrier, that group of woods that comes between, is that still going to be there? Because
The, the barriers.
Have some kind of a barrier.
Yeah, the, the barrier is far, I mean, I, I hope they're not ever going to, you know, put that road in. Uh, and they don't have the money to do it now, and I hope it stays that way. But that, that band of trees would remain, I'm sure. Uh, and, and, you know, and if we have, um, if we get the grant, uh, and we have any money left over, I would certainly go, go back to Parks and say, how, how about we, you know, uh, at least take the Bradford pears out of the Lower Meadow or, or, or insist that they do. Because it's parkland and there should not be Bradford pears on parkland, and they know it. Got to be a little bit of a squeaky wheel.
I have a question, um, and I agree, this has been a very convincing presentation and I'm, I'm pretty much sold. But I do have one question, which I brought up, I think, at the last meeting, which is the, um, the noise pollution. Because I know that when I walk that section of Ridge Road, I can hear, what is it, the ICC? You know, and, and then when I walk in the Meadow, it's, you know, you just hear that traffic noise. And so, you know, and I understand all the reasons for taking out the trees, but I can't help but think the trees would, you know, give us a, a sound barrier. Um.
We, we can actually do a controlled experiment, because you can, you can download apps to get decibels on your phone. And I would be willing to bet it won't make one decibel of difference. Uh, because, again, there's still going to be hundreds of trees. There's the same distance and it's up the hill. Uh, and I hate the noise as much as anybody. I, I, and, and I'm not that, I'm not close, that close to that noise. But I, I really am disturbed by all the, uh, you know, the traffic noise and everything else around here. The one thing that's going to help us a little bit in the long run is as transportation gets electrified, the low rumble noise, which is what really carries the, the cars that don't have mufflers that work, the Harley-Davidsons, whatever. You know, it, it, over the next decade or two, as that diminishes, then the sound won't carry quite as much. But, uh, I really don't think these cedars are going to make much difference at all, if any.
Yeah.
But we can, we can measure it, uh, you know, after the first phase, we can measure it.
This is just a thought. I wonder about, um, adding trees to the barrier. The, like, you know, the, the barrier trees, you know, and, and I don't know, maybe that's something
Yeah.
Think about for later.
Uh, to, certainly to that understory. That's not a, that's actually not a very healthy wood, uh, but it, but
It's kind of sparse, so.
If we were to ta- if we were to take out the, um, some of the cedars in that understory, we could put plants like serviceberry, you know, we could, we, we can try to thicken up, uh, that barrier a bit with understory, uh, plants that would be native and would host native, you know, caterpillars and so forth. It would, I think it'd be a, a good thing to do, and I'm sure that Parks would, uh, help us with that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Is the ultimate goal for it to look like two thousand and three?
No, no, it'll never look like two thousand and three again unless there's a conflagration or something. You know, we're, we're not, we're not taking out, you know, again, the deliberately planted, uh, uh, you know, trees that have been introduced in, in the last few years. There'll still be the, the, the trees along Ridge. The, 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 the thickened, uh, stand of trees between the upper and lower Meadow. And, um, we need to, uh, you know, maintain a, a good cluster of trees at the northeast end, because that's part of the deal of our view shed, uh, to, to not see that new subdivision or relatively new subdivision, uh, up there. Uh, so there's still going to be a lot of trees. I mean, there's still going to be hundreds of trees. Uh, Bob Buwer, question?
Yeah, when we, uh, when we were battling the, uh, the ICC and we were doing the, the sound readings and had hired a sound specialist, he pointed out that the trees really don't do a whole lot for, uh, blocking the sound. What happens is it sort of becomes what he called environmental sound, which is sort of just goes up into the air and then reverberates through the atmosphere, essentially. The direct, uh, the direct, uh, impingement of the sound really only can be done but with a sound wall, so.
And, and, uh, unfortunately, electrifying will not eliminate the noise by any means, because a lot of the noise is road noise. And, and, uh, you know, it's just the, the deep rumble engine noise eventually that will go away. And that will make a difference in terms of your impression of the sound.
All right. I, I just want to point out that, uh, Bruce's, uh, introduction of this, uh, of the status of the Meadow Restoration Discussion was just that. Um, the formal proposal for the, for, um, for, for the restoration project will probably come exactly as or, or not significantly different than what Bruce has outlined. Um, at which point, I think, uh, I think, uh, behooves the Town Council to express its support or reservation. But as I say, we, uh, it was important to get this out there. We've already received some public comments about, about this proposal. And, um, we want to be sure that everybody, uh, can provide their, their input and understands exactly, uh, all the aspects of, of what is being proposed. So let's, uh, let's leave it for tonight. There's no action to be taken and it will be revisited um, in a future meeting, certainly.
I'd just like to add, uh, thank you, and I'm, I'm happy to, you know, answer anybody's questions offline. Uh, I'm in the book. And, uh, and our meetings are on the third Wednesday of the month, uh, seven-thirty by Zoom. So anybody wants to come and make a public comment or join the committee or join our Weed Warrior events or anything, we're always happy to have that.
I, I, I would, I, I should comment that, uh, since, uh, Bruce and, uh, and others proposed that the Meadow had, uh, uh, was, um, was disappearing and that, uh, something, uh, perhaps should be done. The, uh, he and, uh, the Meadow Committee has been very effective at, um, at galvanizing the Parks Department um, to, um, meet the expectations of the Operations Plan and make, make modifications that are appropriate and take actions. So that's, uh, this is a, a, um, you know, they deserve, I think, significant credit for their efforts. And of course, this is how things get done in Washington, Grove, when people take an interest. I don't need to cite all the examples of that. Um, the Humpback Bridge was preserved because of the interest of, 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 of residents, the, uh, the, um, bike path came to be. Uh, uh, the Meadow is there at all because of, um, everyone's commitment to, um, various aspects. So, uh, congratulations to the Meadow Committee and Bruce in particular for, um, you know, addressing this question, um, and bringing it, uh, forward. Great. Alrighty, so the next item on, under new business is playground survey, survey results, which Eva, uh, described in the Town Council report, but which I thought should be, um, presented on the agenda uh, to be sure that the town and everyone is aware of, um, what that survey, um, revealed. So Eva has agreed to go through, um, uh, a bit about the, um, about the, um, report that she, um, she distributed and I put into the materials. So Eva?
Yeah, um, and I apologize, I didn't have time to make a PowerPoint, which I would have wanted to. But, um, if you want to just put the report up, John, I can kind of go through it. And I will, we'll have this on the website and listserv and bulletin, so people can read through it on their own. Um, I do want to say a quick thank you to Peggy Buwer, who helped me look at the results and gave me some feedback on the report. So, um, yeah, so originally, I just, um, I put together a playground work group um, with the thought of like, oh, oh, wouldn't it be nice to get a new piece of equipment in the park? And then I met with some different playground consultants to kind of see, oh, what could we get that would be fun in our budget? And that's when they told me that, oh, so many of our pieces of equipment were, uh, you know, not, did not meet safety or ADA regulations. And so then I started to think, oh, well, you know, in addition to purchasing new equipment, oh, should we also look at repairing or replacing some of these, um, pieces that are not up to code? Um, so with the survey, the, the playground work group and I, we're hoping to kind of get some clarity on what our priorities should be, should we be trying to repair things, should we be pushing to get something new, should we try to do both? Um, and so I just wanted to note that since the survey was given out and it was given out, I believe in February and it closed at the end of March, we have already made some improvements, um, we got new metal basketball nets, which should have a longer life than the old ones. Um, there was some regrading done by RJ to improve drainage, but it, it, I don't know. I don't know, we'll have to revisit that, um, because I know that drainage is, is an issue. Um, the picnic tables were repaired. So I can talk a little bit more about this, but one of the safety issues that was pointed out was not necessarily that our swings needed to be lowered, but with the height that they are, because they are very high, the enclosure around them would need to be, um, enlarged. The thought being that if a kid swings out and jumps off the swing, they would either potentially fall outside of the enclosure or worst case scenario, fall directly on the wooden border. Um, so originally I was trying to figure out, well, should we lower the swings? Should we, and, you know, enlarge the border? In the end, what we decided to do as sort of a compromise is we just removed the borders completely. Um, so, you know, obviously it wouldn't be great if a kid falls not in the, the absorbent wood chips, but at least they will not fall on a wooden border itself. Um, we also cut, um, paths into all the play areas and the picnic areas, um, to help with, um, accessibility for wheelchairs and strollers. We added more wood chips, um, we purchased new signs, including play at your own risk, which was something that was suggested to us by the, um, town insurance person. We also have a handicap parking sign, um, yet to be installed that will go in the parking lot. Um, and there's a few other improvements that we'll likely make in the near future. Um, and then overall, the survey revealed that residents are concerned about safety and there is a desire for new equipment. However, there's also a strong attachment to the older pieces of equipment, most of which don't meet safety regulations and would be very hard to, you know, I, I think some people are like wanting best of both worlds of like, well, can't we just repair the old equipment to make it safety compliant and that's just not possible. Um, so there's kind of, you know, um, a, a tough way to satisfy both sides. Um, I have actually stepped back from this project because I just don't have time for it right now. So the addition of a new piece of equipment will have to be revisited. Um, there is one potential thing and this has not by any means been decided. Um, but, um, would likely be agreeable to most residents, which is the removal of the metal jungle gym on the far side of the parking lot, kind of near the baseball diamond. So that metal structure, and I don't know if people can picture what it is, um, but it was struck by a tree many years ago and damaged and it was never repaired, um, the playground consultants flagged it as not meeting safety standards. Um, in the survey, it was not specifically listed by anyone as a favorite piece of equipment and some residents did list it as a safety concern or that it would be removed. So that might be something that we can look into the possibility of removing, um, but we will not remove any equipment without, you know, opening that up to, um, public comment. And that's really the only thing, um, right now that I think we would, we would consider. Um, so John, if you can scroll. Um, so, um, if you want to read more about all of my findings from meeting with the playground consultants, I met with four of them. Um, one specifically to talk about ADA and the other ones who just immediately started telling me all of the, the safety information. Um, that's at the end of the document, I probably won't go over that tonight. Oh, oh no, okay. So just really quickly, I don't want to bore people, this is the question by question, you can again, look at this on your own. How often do you and your family use the park? Um, this kind of goes through people's favorite pieces of equipment and the swings were a huge, um, you know, popular item. Um, so I'm glad we found a compromise with that, you can scroll down. Um, what pieces of equipment do you and your family rarely use? You can see, um, things that, you know, there were five people who said that they rarely use the metal jungle gym on the far side of the parking lot. Um, go ahead and scroll down. Are there any pieces of equipment you would like to see removed, repaired or replaced? You can see a lot of people either said remove nothing or said no to this question. Um, although there were people who had overall safety concerns about the older equipment, go ahead and scroll down. Um, any pieces of equipment you'd like to see added? There were, um, several mentions of exercise stations for adults. Um, also, uh, mentions of kind of a larger jungle gym type system. Um, and again, people felt strongly the swings should not be removed. I would say the merry, the merry-go-round, the kind of colorful merry-go-round, they're probably divided. A lot of people wanting it removed and a lot of people really wanting it to stay. Um, so again, you can see why this is a difficult, uh, thing to figure out. Uh, you can scroll down. Um, so what is most important to you? Um, so fifty-five percent of people felt repairing and retaining old equipment as long as it can be brought to current safety and ADA requirements was most important. But that's, as I said, very challenging because it's, for some of them, we just, there's no way to do that, basically. Um, number eight is sort of moot because I was asking about if we should lower the height of the swings or enlarge the, um, enclosure and we kind of came up with a, with a solution to that for now. Um, we talked about how important is it to you that the playground has Grove character? Um, there's some people that felt very strongly about Grove character. Um, for some people that meant vintage and eclectic and historic, for some people that meant, um, nature and, uh, you know, using like wood and natural, um, looking things. Uh, you can read the comments there, you can scroll down. Um, yes, lots of comments there. Um, how do you think it could best be improved? Again, there's the drainage issue and then just other comments. Um, and I would say, you know, when I was sort of absorbing all of the, the survey information, there was a lot of anxiety about things being changed and the playground losing its character, but there was also a lot of concern about safety. And so again, it's just, it's going to be, that's why I'm like, I need to just, I don't have time to figure this out right now because, um, it's going to be hard to figure out the best plan of action. Um, and then, yeah, at the bottom is, is where I kind of, I won't go over that tonight, but all the things that I found out, um, from the playground consultants. Um, so, you know, moving forward, I think we, we might look into removing the metal jungle gym. We might continue to work on drainage, we'll get the handicap sign in the parking lot. Um, I will see if there's some smaller things that I can do, but I just, I, I felt like I really didn't have time to work on getting the funding and trying to figure out what, you know, I, I feel like the survey was, was very divided as to what people want. Um, and I, I think what some people want is just not possible. Um, but again, we will not remove anything or make any major decisions without opening it up to public comment. Um, so that's, and yeah, you'll, you can feel free to, uh, read it for yourself, I know it is very long. Um, but there it is, so, thank you.
Yeah, hey, even forgetting about the survey, the fact that, um, all the work you did as far as, you know, looking at that, we just take it for granted, it's been there, people, a lot of people, so many people not within the Grove use it all the time too. And I think that you did an amazing job of identifying areas that could be improved. You know, just like when you walk from the parking lot, right when it's raining and people are walking through mud and puddles and, and now there's a walkway there.
Oh, yeah, I can't believe I didn't put that on there, but yeah, we put in the walkway from the parking lot to the picnic area, yeah.
Yeah, little things like the picnic tables, besides having to be repaired, the tree branches were like in people's faces and, you know, the swings. You did so much making it ADA compliant, the signage is beautiful, I think John wants credit for that.
John, John can get credit for the signs, because.
Yeah, but, but it's like totally revitalized the whole playground and the interest in it. And, um, you know, you and, and I know Mary, that, that I think some help with you, but you know, you did a great job.
Yeah, and I should also say Barbara was involved as well, um, and Steve, certainly. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I, I feel like I've done, I've done what I can, I'll continue to do some things. Um, as far as getting new equipment, it's, it's going to be a, yeah. I, I, whoever did the new equipment, whenever it happened, when was it, in two thousand and four or something? I'm going to maybe, I think it was, was it Jen Hicks? I don't know. Might have to ask her how the, that decision was made, but, um, but anyway, yeah. So, and I do think the new path from the parking lot to the picnic area helps with some of the mud issues because that's where the worst of the mud was and now there's a path, so, yeah. But still, if there's been heavy rain, wear your rain boots to the playground would be my recommendations. So, any questions, let me know, but I, that's all.
Okay, everybody should take a look and try and, and therefore not be too surprised when eventually sooner or later the playground group comes back with more and/or Eva alone comes back with more suggestions for, uh, for improving the playground.
Can I, can I ask a question whether resurfacing the tarmac ba, basketball court has been considered to draw people away from unofficially using the hard court tennis court?
I can, I can answer that and, um, I've talked with Steve about that. And there is a way of, um, doing it, it's not going to cost a million dollars. So Steve had a suggestion for that and I don't know, I don't know if Eva, we probably didn't talk about that.
No, but I, I'm interested in that.
Yeah, there is, there is a way Steve said to, um, kind of repave that in a way that make it more, make it more presentable. So that's being looked at.
Can we put pickleball courts there?
We have two pickleball courts, John.
Yeah, but they interfere with the tennis court. Okay, uh, that was just. Um, great, thank you, um, Ava, um, and let's go move along. The, uh, last item of new business, which we can handle or defer as the council wishes, is the, uh, the, again, uh, while I've said this many times, that we periodically have an increase in concerns over, um, um, cars traveling too fast around town. The, the, the most recent recurrence of concern is on Chestnut Road. And, um, a lot of comments were flown back and forth on the listserv. But Kathy witnesses it out her window in the office, um, as well. So, um, you know, it's a, uh, it, it, it's an, it's an issue which I believe the, the town, the, the town council should take some action on, not necessarily tonight. But I did want to, I want to propose, uh, that we review the speed, the, the traffic calming and speed bump hump placements on, um, on Chestnut Avenue.
And, and Grove, Grove Road.
Oh, uh, what am I talking about? No, not Grove Road.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, because what's happening is that if you talk with Steve, the traffic czar, if, if we do really get Chestnut to function properly, the cars are all going to go, which they do now, they'll go around on, and they do, they go around Grove instead, you know, up McCauley.
All right.
So it needs to be looked at.
One at a time, Peter, so if that happens, we certainly can do that. Um, I, I do want to show, I, I, I cobbled up just, uh, just took this map of the town and used the chest, I think just to help you guys can see this. Just as a, as, as a way of discussing, um, su- suggestions that have been raised as to how to go about traffic calming on, on Chestnut Road. So I've tried to put in, um, with the red bars, um, where the current speed bumps and the one hump up here. Uh, uh, I think it's opposite one top, not sure exactly where it is, I, it may be not quite in the right position, but it's on this, on this block where they currently exist when they are installed. Um, and, um, the question is, uh, or, or the, the reality is that they, uh, they seem to be, uh, insufficiently effective at, uh, reducing the relatively few, but nevertheless troublesome number of cars that, uh, want to race down Chestnut Road. So, um, I didn't put any of the suggested solutions on here, but, um, among those are, can you see my pointer? Uh, among those are, um, are, are the, the two I want to mention, um, right off. One is a speed up here between McCauley and Acorn. Um, to an, a hump that's like we have up here at the other end of Chestnut Road to reduce speed coming up to Acorn Lane. The current, um, the current, uh, bump is only across half of the road. So, you know, drivers can, can clearly go around, attempt to go around. Um, that can be made difficult, if not impossible, by, by the, uh, appropriate placement of a, of a immovable object uh, on the, on the other side of the road. Um, but probably not, um, so I'm not sure what to do about that. However, these, um, these, um, bumps that are at the stop signs at Chestnut Road and Oak. Um, Jean Moyer made an interesting suggestion and that was, um, well, the fact is that one can go around either one of these if one was so inclined because we only, we, we only have the bump covering the, uh, the travel lane in either direction. She, um, wondered whether or not a bump could be placed up totally across Chestnut Road, making it impossible to, um, avoid it. Uh, but put it on only one side, so not at both stop signs, but at one stop sign or the other. Um, and thereby forcing anyone to either go over it and I hope we all agree, seriously, uh, impacting your suspension and car or slow down. So that, that struck me as something interesting to consider. Um, of course, you could put, put bumps here at, um, Grove and Center as well. Um, and really, really make it a, uh, a, a hopscotch of, of bumps. All right, that's all I'm going to say about this. Um, I, I do think that it's, uh, maybe the time to consider, um, um, other additional traffic calming on Chestnut Road. All right, but do you have any comments?
Yeah, you know, this has been going on since I've been here and I'm, I'm just saying, I'll make, this is my comment, it's been going on forever. I don't think it's all that complicated as far as, and there is technology out today that we didn't have forty years ago. Um, I, I go up to Mount Airy a lot, they have exact, very similar situations. They have some, um, you have solar powered, um, you know, signs that read speed, okay? And you could, you could put them in and, you know, you could actually see, people can see how fast they're driving. It's hardly, fifteen miles an hour is really hard to go. And a lot of people within town, you know, not just, not just these people from out of town, but the people in town are just as bad as these people out of town. And, you know, maybe we need to invest a little technology to, um, you know, help people slow down. But not, but, you know, so anyway, I'm, I'm researching right now. So at the next meeting, I will, I will request, um, some funds to do something. I mean, that's what I would like to see, you know, I think Ridge Road is a problem, Grove Road's a problem and Chestnut's a problem. Of course, Washington Grove Lane, but we don't control that. Yeah, there's some, there's some things out there.
Anybody, other council members have a comment? I have a raised hand, resident. No? Okay, I don't know whether it's Sarah or Rick.
It's Rick.
List that Hickory is a problem. They go to scary enough.
Yeah, so, I don't know if I, do I have the floor here? Okay, so one question is regarding the speed bumps that only go halfway across. Do we have evidence, substantial evidence that a lot of people are trying to go around them? Cause, I mean, it seems like the idea of putting one all the way across, if we don't know that that's the case. And then also, I just wanna put in a, a quick note for your thoughts, Peter, on the, the idea of radar thing. While I can be very supportive of that in general, the idea of more light pollution and out, you know, especially having any lights blinking at night, please don't do that to me. As, as somebody who lives on Chestnut Road, so.
Well, if, if, well, all you have to do is don't speed and you won't see it.
That's not true, because, you know, if somebody else speeds, then I'm gonna see it.
Right, right.
Thank you.
All right, well, we certainly don't have to discuss this in detail since there's no actual proposal to take action here. The, unless any council members have any further comments, we will move along. All right.
I have one, John. Are you gonna repair the one that was pulled out?
Yes, that's on the schedule to be repaired.
Great, thank you.
Right, Peter? Right. Okay.
Well, yeah, but we'll talk about it, but it's, it's, it's kind of the, the suggestions were, to talk to you about some of the something similar to what you were talking about, about where the best placement is for that. You know, the best you, so we can talk, we'll talk about that. But it is being repaired.
Okay. Well, we're gonna change the placement, but right now it should go back where it was. Right, all right, so we're on to town council reports. I have just a few things that I pulled out to, to of note, one was the playground survey, which Eva has now given a more detailed report on. It's in her council reports. The DEI education suggestion, the metrics and everything else she included in her report. It's, it's also in the materials for the meeting. The lake, Mary went through a lot of the volunteer efforts at the lake, which included diving board being installed, reinstalled for the rest of the season. And a host of maintenance tasks that volunteers, that the lake committee performed. Peter reported from the Gateway Committee that volunteers have been refurbishing the MacArthur Hall signs that were at McCauley entrance to the Grove and at the Chestnut Road entrance off Railroad Street. Other signs also need to be refurbished or eliminated as case may be. And finally, Peter reported with ma- about, regarding maintenance, that the vehicle access portion of Sixth Avenue has been regravelled. And that Ridge Road has, the speed humps at Ridge Road have been signs have been improved, in my opinion, since I'm right across from them. And you can see an example right behind me in my background concerning that. Where the, in this case, you can't quite see all of it here. But now the, it, it's a low sign, caution five miles per hour, it's coming up. And then at the sign, there's another one. And this is in several places. I have photos, but I won't show them all. And I think it's a significant improvement. It's the kind of signage that we've planned to put whenever we make, make changes to the signs on our roads around town. So thank you, Peter, for getting, getting those installed. All right, so that's all I had out of the council reports. Anybody else have anything they would like to say about their report? Okay, if not, I need a motion to approve the council.
Yeah, I'm having a hard time trying to find my unmute button. I'm sorry.
It moves around, I know.
So, so I, I guess, to backtrack on, on the speeding and the speed bumps. And I put it in the town council's report also, but, you know, we, we were trying to figure out what needed to be done to try to resurrect the emergency preparedness and, and safety committee. And we did. So I'd asked core members, I guess, to, to, to give me some updates and brief, brief me on, on what was done before. And, and speeding came up. And so we did talk about, and, and it's very preliminary, about, you know, speed signs and solar operated signs and, and the costs, that type of thing, and, and speed bumps. And we just, you know, it was in a preliminary stage right now. What we're trying to do is, is, and I need to draft some kind of a, a statement to put in the next newsletter to try to get more volunteers, I guess, because we're trying to reinvigorate and, and reestablish the emergency preparedness and, and safety committee.
Good.
Yes. And, and Chris, I apologize, I should have made note of that. Yes, we've been so, so involved in reviewing what's going on. But yeah, everybody should, should definitely read Chris's thorough report on the, the, his, his efforts to re, re resurrect the emergency preparedness and safety committee. Which has done so much valuable and, and work over, over the years. Thank you, Chris, for bringing this up.
And can I just point out that I did include something for the sustainability committee, but my revised notes were not in the, in the committee report. Nothing, nothing, nothing or shadowing happened, but I, I did, I did put that in my report.
Okay. All right, so I need a motion to approve for posting the council report.
Well, John, just can we, did you, you said something about the abandoned, that, the houses?
We're, we're meeting, we're meeting on this week. Nothing to report yet, but we're meeting.
Oh, so is that what you said? Oh, so it's just that it's still being organized, kind of organized, okay.
And are, are we a work group? What do we call ourselves?
We're a subcommittee.
Subcommittee, okay, thank you.
Come on, get with the program, just.
You finished with this vote yet?
Uh, no. It's been moved and seconded to accept the council reports for posting. All in favor? All right.
Who moved and who seconded? I never heard that.
Nobody, don't worry about it.
There's no motion?
I made the, I made the motion, I made the motion.
Okay, second not required, but.
That's fine.
All right, so we're coming to the end of the meeting. We have some approval of minutes. There are two sets of minutes to approve, one of which I sent out just today. And it's for the council meeting that was held April sixteenth. Those minutes fell through the cracks is one, one, one explanation. And have finally materialized. I distributed them, they're in the materials. And I hope, you know, a few people had a chance to, to read them. Everyone here in the council, with the exception of Chris, was at that meeting. So I'd like to get them approved so that we can finally post them. And Christine won't be offended that there's this gap in minutes that aren't on the website. And I don't blame her whatsoever. I'm not, I'm not criticizing her. She's right. They, they need to be. So can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve, Barbara.
I'll second, Mary.
Thank you.
So, John, the minutes are fine, but the April, I only, I read, going through the April minutes, I found at least five grammatical, do you wanna call them errors in there? Where it, just like the wrong word, the extra words or whatever. And I, you know, we don't need to spend twenty minutes, but that could just be, you know, go through the editor of Word, it would all be fixed.
Peter, I guarantee you that I run, this is in the minutes.
April, yeah.
I, I run a
I thought so, yeah.
I run a spell and grammar check. If I didn't, I apologize right now. But I'll do it right as we're speaking.
Oh, good, okay.
Because I, I, I do try and correct all of those.
Yeah, I know, I know, I've never seen.
I've just done it and it says it's a hundred percent correct.
Yeah, well.
If you have anything.
Well, and it said it when I sent it to you too.
It's not the same as when you sent it to me. It's significantly revised. But, okay, Peter, I try to, grammatical stuff can always be corrected.
Exactly, because the, yeah, everything is totally correct and fine, so. And I'm, I'm gonna, and I'm gonna send you, I'm gonna send you a copy. Yeah, you will.
All right, and, and any comments? There's none. All right, all in favor of approving April sixteen minutes? Thank you. All right, the other set of minutes was the, was the July seventh minutes. There was, Barbara pointed out, requested the addition of something in the action portion, which, which I felt was was appropriate to add, so I'm gonna show it to you right now. These are the minutes, the July eighth meeting. And what was added is here in yellow, under action, where under the DEI education agenda item, the council deferred action on the motion until the August meeting. Barbara asked the comments from Rasic, he provided at least a week ahead of the meeting and offered to meet separately with Rasic to further explain the proposals and answer questions. So she described that, in fact, that's what she did, so. That's been added to the minutes that I'd like to have moved for, for approval.
This is Barbara, I move.
Thank you. All right, all in favor? All right, minutes approved, great. So we're caught up on minutes almost. All right, so.
Did you get the ones they sent you this afternoon?
Well, yeah, but that.
No, I, no, I just, did you get them? That's all I have.
Of course I did. That was less than two weeks ago, thank you. That was very efficient. Okay, so last item on the agenda is to review the, the, the coming meetings. We're having a meeting tomorrow night at seven thirty. Principally, the only item of business on the agenda is to hear from SMI Environmental in a closed session. But then, of course, as I said before, the meeting will be started as an open session and we will have to vote to go into closed session. And the next regular meeting of the town council will be Monday, September ninth. At that meeting, I will not be, I'm, I'm hoping to participate, but don't hold me to that, I will be in Portugal. Barbara, I believe, said she was gonna be out of town, but here in the US, and she will be as, as Mayor Protem will be.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll be in town.
Oh, you are gonna be.
Yeah, I, yeah, it changed, yeah.
Great, so Barbara will be, be chairing that meeting. Okay, that's it. If there, anybody have any final comments before we adjourn? Okay, see you all tomorrow night, as the council, all and, and council and our advisors.